Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 17th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Check this dog out. Commissioner Laurie has for the day.
This is your still puppy. Yeah, you're still a puppy.
Beautiful collar.
Nice.
Oh, you already got a friend.
Wow, good looking dog.
What a pretty dog. Come here. Come here, Cookie. Want Cookie?
Is that for you or the dog? Are you hungry already? Come here. Come here. Sit, can you sit? Want a cookie? Shy, she's shy. Oh, there, she's taking it. Well, we have a, probably about a year old, yellow lab. You can see she has a great personality. She walks real well on leash. She makes somebody a great pet, so if you're looking for a yellow lab, come down to our dog kennel. I usually get the small dogs, but luckily, we only have like 12 dogs at our kennel, so that's great news for us. Come on, and if you don't want to make the trip down in the winter, you could check us out on the website. Thanks. She's a beautiful dog.
Yes, she is.
What a good baby.
A thought for today: Never put both feet in your mouth at the same time, because then you won't have a leg to stand on.
I like that a lot.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
At 9:45, we'll have the first public hearing on CDBG programs under resolutions, number one, Job and Family Services bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a couple of potential hires that I have at Workforce Development, Community Development, and I do want to discuss our continuing position with regards to labor relations. All of those subjects are allowable for executive session under the Sunshine Law, so I request that we have an executive session to conclusion of our regular board meeting today to talk about those items. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the same county Commissioners' meeting minutes for February 10th and 11th, which was for Childcare 2010.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Authorized severance pay sick hours to Alan Whacker, former Illyria Municipal City Bailiff, in the amount of $825.38 for collecting the county's two-fifth share.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Instruct clerk to advertise for bids for paper products, trash liners, and cleaning products. Notice being in the Journal on February 18th and 25th. Bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on March 4th in the Commissioners' hearing room.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Children and Families, approved payment to be made from Children and Family First Administrative Account to the Erie Account to correct the revenue deposit on November 9, 2009, in the amount of $16,112.13.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Community Development, approve and enter into room with CT Consultants will be with the state required RRS inspections for the fiscal year nine. CDBG formula grant in the amount not to exceed 33,000 effective January 1, 2010 through December 31, 2010, and will be paid from the Contract Services Other Expenses account.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Transit, approve and enter into an MOU with the City of Vermillion to provide services for Vermillion, Brown Hill Township, Lorraine Community Health Partners, Cleveland Clinic, from Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, retroactive to January 1, 2010 through December 31, 2010. City of Vermillion will provide the county with 7,500 to be used as match for grant funds and no general funds will be used.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Cordez on this, or Ron, whoever's, is this going to be like a Dial-A-Ride program for Vermillion and Brown Hill Township residents, or is this going to be actual bus services running? Like a connector?
It's more a fixed route, if I'm not mistaken. Ron's been working on it, but they stop at about four locations for pickups?
I don't know what their service is. In the past, we've given 15,750, yeah, 700, 7,500 from the Commissioners' General Fund, and then the community comes up with match, and then they contract their service through the Erie County DD. This year, we said that we had, we were cutting transit severely. We had very little money in the general fund and that we could not do that, and they said if we come up with the local match, give the county a check, can they leverage that with the FTA money? We checked and we can, so they're sending us their local money, no county general funds, so they'll have the same level of service.
Unlike Dial-A-Ride, they go to specific locations.
Right.
I believe they probably do pickups, but I know that the locations are restricted to the ones you've identified when they run the show. They couldn't possibly afford to run a full Dial-A-Ride, but it's nice to see one of the communities stepping up. We weren't able to make the general fund match this year, as everybody's aware, and we continue to make them aware, because it's important to understand that, and Vermillion stepped up and figured out a way to make the general fund whole and make the match so they can still benefit from the 50% FTA match to run those services through some unique thinking.
Well, it's a creative way of providing services maybe other communities might think likewise.
I was trying to put it out there, thank you.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Workforce, extend the stimulus work experience program for 18, 21-year-old use until June 30, 2010.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Blair.
That's because you have your draft.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions, deletions, personnel in Children's Services to utilize the agency's Visa credit card for the year 2010, not to exceed 2,500, $10,000, $20,000 in Shell Oil Gas Link Card, not to exceed 200. Expenditures are work related to conferences, food, lodging, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, instruct clerk to advertise for bids for signed materials for Highway Department. Notice being in the Chronicle on February 16th and 26th. Bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on March 5th in the Commissioners' hearing room.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Order Lorraine County Auditor pursuant to Ohio Revest Code 6131.43 to reduce pro-rata the assessments confirmed by it by the difference between the estimated cost of the construction and the final cost certified by the Lorraine County Engineer for the Roth Ditch Lateral One Columbia Township. Final assessment cost was $20,553.17, and annual maintenance assessment is $1,027.66.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
That was a lot less than what originally, like, originally it was like 90, and then it went to 30, now it's to 20?
Yes.
That's great.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister.
The one thing this morning, I would like to let everybody know that the Lorraine County Government social page is up on Facebook. We're going to try to make it informative to follow along with activities and such, so I guess that's the way every organization's going, so we have ours up now, and I know Megan's been putting up content, different meetings and events that are taking place, and so if anybody would like to, I guess the word is sign on board as a friend or whatever it is, I'm pretty new to that stuff myself, please do so. I saw Commissioner Kayla picked up on it just the other day. I think we got about 3.2 friends so far, but we've been, we just came up on Friday, and we're trying to make a go at it, and we're looking for content and things to make it worthwhile for people to be plugged in the Lorraine County Government. So I got that, thank you.
Well, I was talking to Mayor Hunter the other day from Sheffield Village, and what they did on their social networking sites, put everybody up who had warrants out for their arrest. They had 19 people show up in two days.
That's a great idea.
I like that, too.
Maybe we can do that as county government.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
I probably certainly had a lot of people tuning in.
Big Brother is here.
Well, let me know what you think about the Page Commissioners, and obviously, we're looking for comments and things that are going on, and what you want to let the community know, so we're always, you know, trailing, but this time, we're trying to be part of the, part of the wave rather than being run over by it. Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, my son has signed me up for Facebook also, and I, you know, I have a hard time keeping up with my emails, so now I gotta worry about that.
Mr. Innis, this is County Prosecutor.
Commissioners, I would request a resolution. We have to renew our contract with Carlisle Township where we act as their law director and their home rural township, so I would request a resolution renewing that contract for a one-year period from January 1st of this year to 2011.
Do you know how that worked out this year as far as billing is concerned?
I think we use, we figure out about 150 hours, and I think we're pretty well. Couple years, we've been a little over, somewhere a little under. It's been pretty close, I think.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Anything further?
Ms. Blair. Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Is that it? Commissioners' report.
Is that it, Jerry?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, kind of the bearer of bad news here on this one. The sheriff has sent us an email talking about the sheriff sales in Lorraine County, and up until March 24th of this year, we've already scheduled 565 sheriff sales. Last year, for the same time period, was 382, so we're 183 ahead of the game unfortunately this year, so it's not good news. Commissioner Kayla, are you going to talk about the census?
Yep.
Okay, good, because I had that on my list, and then got an email from Mayor Gillock in North Ridgeville about a project he's working on. Is this the same project that, or funding pool that we're going after our projects?
Yes, we've received a number of requests for supports from different organizations within the community, and after talking with the board last week, it was indicated that we also had projects that were seeking funding from the, from similar, similar funding sources, and that we were, while we felt they were all worthy, the board felt they were all worthy, we weren't going to endorse any one particular project. So we've indicated that-
I wasn't sure if this was the same, one of the same funding pool projects.
They're great projects. I will say, for the first time in the last few years, I've seen requests for funding come out of Lorraine that, that are really making sense and look to be great projects.
Okay, and I guess the last thing is, last week, I had brought up the $300 for the locks for the cells over at the Justice Center.
Yes, ma'am.
And I didn't have any support at that time, but now that we talked after the meeting and you said it was something that we could take out of-
Yes, ma'am.
-Justice Center funding, so I didn't know if my other Commissioners were aware of that.
The, I sent an email after discussing it with the Commissioners last week.
I didn't see that.
I sent it out to the sheriff.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was actually my error, because I didn't understand where, I thought the jail was requesting the locks and not the Justice Center.
Okay.
After listening more completely to what was said there, I realized that I had erred in that, and that it was definitely a Justice Center expense. I sent an email to the sheriff late that afternoon indicating that had I read the first request completely, there wouldn't have been no question, and apologized to him and told him we would take care of the locks.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, Commissioner Kowski brought up yesterday, we had a county counts meeting at Lorraine County Community College. I had the opportunity to speak to about 50 early college students, myself, Fred Wright from the Urban League, Marcus Madison, Illyria City Council, and Ann Schloss from the Illyria City Schools about the importance of everyone being counted and the effect it will have on our county for the next 10 years in relation to receiving federal funds and services provided. So it's very nice, they brought the bus in that's touring the country, and Betty Halberton's doing a great job organizing that with Richard Romero, he did a very good job also. Are you going to talk about Noak at all, our first meeting with our new trustees, or should I?
I wasn't going to, so why?
Okay, I'll bring it up. Well, we had our first Noak meeting, went very well. I'd like to thank trustee Rundle and trustee Amizmania. I think they enjoyed their first experience at Noak this past Friday. It was a lot of information, especially in regards to the stimulus money coming out in the next round. Also, had a very nice evening. Congratulations to Kudrowski's Bakery. Great job at the Puncski Ball on Sunday night.
I actually had one this morning, too.
Oh, did you?
Yesterday and today.
I brought some more.
So it's Fat Wednesday for me.
You were complaining last week.
I know.
That's why she had two, because she was complaining.
End of my report, Commissioner.
Thank you. Just an FYI to the news media that's here, Lorraine County Health District, the Lorraine City Health District, and the Illyria Health District has a press release that they've issued this morning about the Lorraine County health rankings. There is a study that was done statewide, I believe. There is an article in the Cleveland area paper this morning that addresses that, but they've made it more specific to our county with this one and a half-page news release. Talks about our rankings and stated that Lorraine County was ranked 36 of the 88 counties in health outcomes, which represent the overall morbidity and mortality rates of the county, and 40th in health factors, which includes health behaviors, clinical care, social and economic factors, and the physical environment. And it goes on to say, "This report ranks the health of counties using not only traditional measures of health, such as low birth weight and adult smoking, but other influences such as access to healthy foods and motor vehicle death rates. The rankings were largely created from nationally available data at the Centers for Disease Control and the National Center for Health Statistics. Most of the data used was public data. A grant from Robert Wood Johnson Foundation provided funding for the data acquisition, analysis, and preparation at no cost to states or communities. The purpose of the rankings is to increase awareness of the many factors that contribute to the health of a community and to underscore the reality that it is essential to approach health improvement through the development of community partnerships. The rankings do not compare cities within counties, Ohio's counties to other states, counties or Ohio to any other state." If anybody's interested, Teresa has copies of the news release. This is for me. Yeah, and that's my report.
Before we go any farther, I want to piggyback on the census, something that Ted did not mention. They are recruiting temporary workers for the census, the census takers, and if you're interested, you can go to 506 Broadway, the 3rd floor in the City of Lorraine. Bilingual speakers are very much encouraged to apply, and there is a note that says, "The pay does not impact government assistance you may currently receive, nor does it disqualify you from receiving government assistance." Have to be a U.S. citizen, legal permanent resident, 18 years of age, have a valid Social Security number, driver's license. You will have to pass a background check and commit to four days of training, and those days are, oh, in February, the 23rd, 24th. So if you're interested in some part-time work, head over to 506 Broadway. Thanks.
Just a note, Investment Advisory will meet next Tuesday at 11 o'clock in Meeting Room A, and then also, I want to thank Mr. Farley, he gave me this morning, whichever you receive.
Fradley.
Fradley?
Yes.
The Four Chaplain stamp.
I think maybe he might like to say something, Teresa.
Do you want to say something?
Mr. Fradley, would you like to come to the microphone? Not just wave, come on up to the microphone and tell us again why you're here this morning. Right there, at the microphone. That way, Hal can pick up your comments.
However, the, is this working?
Yes, it's working.
Oh, because before, it wasn't working at quarter to nine.
Well, we didn't turn it on then.
Oh, I see. I'm Ronald T. Fradley from Lorraine, Ohio, and I'm a stamp collector, or used to be anyway. So how can I help you?
Well, tell us why you came today.
Well, I, I found two more envelopes, and I wanted to complete everyone in this circle to have one.
Right. How thoughtful of you. This is in regard to the Four Chaplains presentation that happened last week, and happened last year.
Yes.
And you gave the center part, each of us, a stamp commemorating that, and you were so thoughtful, as Teresa noted, she didn't, you didn't want her to be left out, so you brought her a stamp today.
Well, since, since that time, since that time, I found three more of them.
You were cleaning.
And, I wished I'd had more of them.
Well, but we think it was so nice of you to remember us at all in the first place, and you gave Jerry Innis some, and-
Dan Bilman.
Mr. Dan Bilman is in the back. I saw you before the meeting started, and you told me what your plan was, so I asked Dan to come to the meeting as well. And Dan, you got some stamps, too. All right. So thank you so much, again.
Yeah, that was, the first time that, a year ago, when they, they came in, they had the ceremony, I was not at the meeting away. Then the next week, I came and brought those three envelopes-
Right.
-that I found. And besides, you know, there was another incident called the Fighting Sullivan's, well, it was a movie called Fighting Sullivan's, and it was five sons that were on the same boat, same ship that was torpedoed. All five of them got lost, and ever since then, the government does not allow two members of the same family being in like the same unit.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that was a good adjustment.
We learn, sometimes too late, but we learn.
Yeah.
Thank you again for coming this morning.
You're welcome.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you. Board Correspondents.
I'll move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
We'll go to our public hearing, Linda Blanchett.
Well, she's to be my twin, but I don't think they're gonna, they'll be able to tell us apart now, don't you think?
Unless you-
That could work on mine now.
Unless you-
Go back to blonde?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm always waiting each week.
You never know.
Yeah, that's right.
Although I've never been that color, I don't know.
This is my natural color, so.
Mine's more like this.
Yeah.
Okay, that's your beauty tip for the day.
There we have it. So this is the first public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Programs. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, everyone.
If you haven't already done so, please pass the sign-in sheets around, sign in.
Is there any handouts or anything for us?
No.
No?
No. Again, I'm here to conduct the first public hearing for the fiscal 2010 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG. This program uses both state and federal dollars, and it's administered locally by the Board of Commissioners, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, through their Community Development Department, which is located at 226 Middle Avenue, Illyria, Ohio. I want to remind everyone that in, in this program, there are acquired cities and there are entitlement communities. An entitlement community must have a population greater than 50,000 residents. Entitlement cities and counties receive their funding directly from the federal government. Illyria and Lorraine are entitlement communities. An acquired city is a community with a population less than 50,000, with concentrations of low-to-moderate-income families, and they receive an earmark from the state but must work with their local county for funding. We have two acquired cities, which is Sheffield Lake and Amherst. North Ridgeville is a state entitlement community, which means they bypass the county and they receive their funds directly from the State Department of Development. Lorraine County is an acquired county, meaning its population is less than 200,000 once the population from, in our case, Illyria and Lorraine, is removed from the county's total population. Acquired counties receiving their funding directly from the state, acquired counties receive their funding directly from the State Department of Development. Today, it's my desire to inform the public that these programs are available. The type of eligible programs, the State of Ohio has identified its general objectives for the use of these funds. The total anticipated federal allocation of the state has been divided and budgeted to meet the community needs, and we are prepared to hear from persons, organizations, and officials from this county concerning the needs that exist in our communities and which needs might be able, we might be able to meet using these CDBG funds. There are scheduled Housing Advisory Committee meetings. They will be held on March 2nd and March 9th at 10:00 AM on the 4th floor, tentatively in Meeting Room A. Those will be advertised in the paper as well. The CDBG plan receives its authority from the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended in 1992, and also HUD, and the Act established three national objectives that have to be met with this, these programs. And that is to say that any activity which uses CDBG funds must meet one of the national objectives, which is benefit low and moderate-income persons and households, aid in the elimination of blum, blum, or slum and blight, and meet an urgent community development need.
I like that.
New term, I'm sure it'll be-
New term.
Google it, Google it. This Act further established a list of eligible community development activities which can This act further established a list of eligible community development activities which can be funded with CDB dollars to include activities designed to create jobs for low and moderate income individuals, provisions of housing, specifically the improvement of housing stock, and items related to the improvement of hu- housing stock, public facilities improvements, activities designed to remove architectural barriers, and public service activities under certain circumstances. Uh, these five activities can be undertaken as long as they meet one of the three stated national objectives. The state of Ohio expects to receive an allocation from, uh, federal 2010 Housing and Urban Development HUD funds. Additional state funds will be earmarked to provide a match. Lorain County received 371,000 in formula allocation for the fiscal year 2009 grant year, and we expect to receive approximately the same amount of funding for 2010. We will be applying for 2010, uh, CDBG formula funding. Lorain County received 557,400 dollars in CHIP funds for fiscal year 2008, and is eligible to apply for up to 500,000 for the 2010 grant year. Fair housing activity is mandatory and is required, is a requirement for receiving these grants. In the past, Lorain County has primarily used four prog, uh, programs. These include Community Housing Improvement Program, which is the CHIP program, Formula Allocation Program, CDBG, Water and Sanitary Sewer Program, and Economic Development Program. Other programs that I will mention, because we're having this public hearing, should I mention them? Possibly we can apply for them in the future. Other programs available are the, uh, Homeless Assistance Grant, Housing Assistance Grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, Comprehensive Downtown Revitalization Tier One, and also Tier Two, Micro Enterprise Business Development Discretionary Grant, and New Horizons Fair Housing Assistance Program. CDBG FY 2010 Funding Request Forms will be mailed out to all eligible townships and cities, uh, this Monday, if not sooner, and, uh, they will be mailed also to past CDBG public service participants. The second public hearing will be held on March 24th, 2010 at 9:45 a.m., same place, fourth floor. And, uh, that is it. The CHIP application deadline is April the 1st, 2010 at 5:00 p.m. All applications must be down to the state by that time. And the CDBG formula deadline is June 25th, 2010, 5:00 p.m. And if anyone has any questions?
Thank you, Linda. Any questions? If not, I move this public hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kyla?
Aye.
Aye.
Weaver, public comment?
Public comment.
Is there anyone who wishes to, Nancy?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have repaired Phase Two reports, may I come forward to bring you a copy?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm learning how to curate these reports, this is new to me, so there's a couple 2008 that should be 2009, so my apologies for the error. 2009, uh, for Phase Two has, was a slow move because of the economy, but we did chug along. As you can see, we have the hours here for, uh, the different tasks that were done for Phase Two. Uh, our office oversees four of the elements out of six, which will be the erosion set of control rules, the post-construction rules, the plan reviews, and then the Lorain County pipe. If you would like, uh, me to bring quarterly reports to the Commissioners, I can do that as well. And does the Commissioners have any questions?
No, there's your friend. I don't think there's any reason for quarterly. Unless we have a big spike, we have really good news, quarterlies would be nice.
Okay, I can do that.
I'm fine with quarterly.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Did you get a copy to here? Any other public comments? Uh, if not, I'll move the board going to executive session for the purposes outlined by the county administrator. Did you have any here? I didn't think you had stuff.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kyla?
Aye.
Moskowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
On April 1st, 2010, our nation will be counted. Every person, whoever they are, wherever they live. And what we learn will transform what we know about ourselves. The 2010 Census, it's a new portrait of America. The 2010 Census is an exciting milestone for America. It promises to deliver accurate information about our diverse and growing population, and it's important for the future of every community. Census data will be used to allocate over $300 billion in federal funds every year.
The 2010 Census will be important to the nation because it is the foundation of our democracy.
The census, no matter when it is, is the consummate partnership between local, state, and federal government.
Communities use the data to plan for their future, like disaster and emergency services, healthcare services, schools, transportation, libraries, senior centers, and more. The 2010 Census builds on the success of previous censuses, and is the best planned and most well-researched census ever. And innovations, like a new short census form, will help to make it even more successful. The 2010 Census, it's easy to complete. Data are always confidential and safeguarded. It's important.
This census is a commitment to the American way of life. To be counted as a resident of the United States, I think is one of the proudest things that can happen to you in this country. It's important, stand up for yourself, be counted, let people know you're out there.
The 2010 Census, it's a new portrait of America. A photograph. A time and place. A picture holds. A moment's space. A portrait of hopes and dreams. Telling the story of our times. And for now, we know that we're changing fast. And for now, it's great that we've met the past. America, let's celebrate. We're proud and we stand tall together. A portrait of a soul. The 2010 Census, it's a new portrait of America.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages five to nine, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously, uh, stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, um, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't, hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and, and do something about it.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School program has been initiated throughout Lorain County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to four, teaching them to walk the streets safely is, uh, is very important to us. Uh, we've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Uh, many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being, uh, hit by automobiles in Lorain County, and, and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to four. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking, crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, uh, simulated streets. We have, uh, actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children. When you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, um, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know? Does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these, uh, skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop, uh, is over. So, uh, we've had many, uh, teachers and many, uh, principals tell us. And we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Spansky? We were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And, uh, so I think the repetition, the interaction, um, with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our, uh, railroad crossing signals actually work, so they're just like, oh, ooh. And, uh, we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know? We'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it, cause you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run? And of course, they're, they're very enthusiastic, and no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and keep, continue to look both ways. Because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. Uh, it could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And, and as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in, in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The, the main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, um, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous, and the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided, um, to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade, and that is Otto the Otto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids. A lot of times you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way. That's dangerous. I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without.
The second video, uh, we show second, third, and fourth grade. And, uh, it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo. What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you're dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So, what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Otto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Uh, Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the, the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, uh, because a lot of children at schools, uh, have parked cars. He goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just, uh, geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Um, our response has been amazing. Not only from the children, we have received numerous cards. Um, we have, I have a whole box of thank yous, uh, from children from the schools that where we have, uh, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we've visited this year.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
Um, I saw that, um, we could, um, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road, so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight. If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to. If they don't know how to cross with the outside walks, I'll tell them how to do that too, cause that's what we learned.
Um, I think that it was good, because I didn't feel like you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids, if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea, because, um, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a, with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to safety town and they learn left, look left, look right, look left again, and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, Matthew, remember Asimo? And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the, in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, um, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of, um, even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road, and, um, I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. Um, I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We are very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties, secure and safe Ohio RideShare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE or register online at ohio rideshare.com. Point, click, ride.
On April 1st, 2010, our nation will be counted. Every person, whoever they are, wherever they live. And what we learn will transform what we know about ourselves. The 2010 Census. It's a new portrait of America. The 2010 Census is an exciting milestone for America. It promises to deliver accurate information about our diverse and growing population. And it's important for the future of every community. Census data will be used to allocate over $300 billion in federal funds every year.
The 2010 Census will be important to the nation because it is the foundation of our democracy.
The census, no matter when it is, is the consummate partnership between local, state, and federal government.
Communities use the data to plan for their future, like disaster and emergency services, healthcare services, schools, transportation, libraries, senior centers, and more. The 2010 Census builds on the success of previous censuses and is the best-planned and most well-researched census ever. And innovations, like a new short census form, will help to make it even more successful. The 2010 Census, it's easy to complete. Data are always confidential and safeguarded. It's important.
This census is a commitment to the American way of life. To be counted as a resident of the United States, I think is one of the proudest things that can happen to you in this country. It's important. Stand up for yourself. Be counted. Let people know you're out there.
The 2010 Census. It's a new portrait of America. The 2010 Census. It's a new portrait of America.
Hello. My fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel on Hattaway Street, just south of Illyria City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a Special Heart Medical Care License Tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the Special Heart Tag.
The Lorraine County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here. This is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you. Take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page. Then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 17th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Check this dog out. Commissioner Laurie has for the day. Beautiful collar. Oh, you already got a friend. What a pretty dog. Is that for you or the dog? Are you hungry already? Sit, can you sit? Want a cookie? Shy, she's shy. Oh, there, she's taking it. Well, we have a probably about a year-old yellow lab. You can see she has a great personality. She walks real well on leash. She makes somebody a great pet. So if you're looking for a yellow lab, come down to our dog kennel. I usually get the small dogs. But luckily, we only have like 12 dogs at our kennel. So that's great news for us. So come on. And if you don't want to make the trip down in the winter, you could check us out on the website. Thanks. She's a beautiful dog. What a good baby. A thought for today. Never put both feet in your mouth at the same time because then you won't have a leg to stand on. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
At 9:45, we'll have the first public hearing on CDBG programs, under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a couple of potential hires that I have at Workforce Development, Community Development. And I do want to discuss our continuing position with regards to labor relations. All those subjects are allowable for executive session under the Sunshine Law. So I request that we have an executive session to conclusion of our regular board meeting today to talk about those items. Thank you.
Approved and waived the reading in the same county Commissioners' meeting minutes for February 10th and 11th, which was for Childcare 2010.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized Severance Pay Sick Hours to Alan Whacker, former Illyria Municipal City Bailiff, in the amount of $825.38 for collecting the county's 2/5 share.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Instruct clerk to advertise for bids for paper products, trash liners, and cleaning products. Notice being in the journal on February 18th and 25th. Bids to be opened at 2:00 p.m. on March 4th in the Commissioners' hearing room.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Children and Families, approve payment to be made from Children and Family First Administrative Account to the Erie Account to correct the revenue deposit on November 9, 2009, in the amount of $16,112.13.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Community Development, approve and enter into room with CT Consultants, Willa Vee, with the state required RRS inspections for the fiscal year 9. CDBG formula grant in the mountain act to exceed $33,000 effective January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2010, and will be paid from the Contract Services Other Expenses account.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
All right.
Under Transit, approve and enter into an MOU with the city of Vermillion to provide services for Vermillion Brown Hill Township, Lorraine Community Health Partners, Cleveland Clinic, from Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., retroactive to January 1, 2010, through December 31, 2010. City of Vermillion will provide the county with $7,500 to be used as match for grant funds and no general funds will be used.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Cordez on this or Ron, whoever's. Is this going to be like a Dial-A-Ride program for Vermillion and Brown Hill Township residents? Or is this going to be actually a bus service that's running?
It's more a fixed route, if I'm not mistaken. Ron's been working on it. But they stop at about four locations for pickups?
I don't know what their service is. In the past, we've given $15,750, yeah, 7,500 from the Commissioners' General Fund. And then the community comes up with match. And then they contract their service through the Erie County DD. This year, we said that we had, we were cutting transit severely. We had very little money in the general fund and that we could not do that. And they said if we come up with the local match, give the county a check. Can they leverage that with the FTA money? We checked and we can. So they're sending us their local money, no county general funds. So they'll have the same level of service.
Unlike Dial-A-Ride, they go to specific locations. I believe they probably do pickups. But I know that the locations are restricted to the ones you've identified when they run the show. They couldn't possibly afford to run a full Dial-A-Ride. But it's nice to see one of the communities stepping up. We weren't able to make the general fund match this year, as everybody's aware. And we continue to make them aware because it's important they understand that. And Vermillion stepped up and figured out a way to make the general fund whole and make the match so they can still benefit from the 50% FTA match to run those services through some unique thinking.
Well, it's a creative way of providing services. Maybe other communities might think likewise.
I was trying to put it out there. Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Workforce, extend the stimulus work experience program for 18, 21-year-old youth until June 30, 2010.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions, deletions, personnel in Children's Services to utilize the agency's Visa credit card for the year 2010, not to exceed $2,500, $10,000, $20,000 in Shell Oil Gas Link Card, not to exceed $200. Expenditures are work related to conferences, food, lodging, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, instruct clerk to advertise for bids for signed materials for Highway Department. Notice being in the Chronicle on February 16th and 26th. Bids to be opened at 2:00 p.m. on March 5th in the Commissioners' hearing room.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Order Lorraine County Auditor pursuant to Ohio Revest Code 6131.43 to reduce pro-rata the assessments confirmed by it by the difference between the estimated cost of the construction and the final cost certified by the Lorraine County Engineer for the Roth Ditch Lateral 1 Columbia Township. Final assessment cost was $20,553.17. Annual maintenance assessment is $1,027.66.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
That was a lot less than what originally like, originally it was like 90 and then it went to 30. Now it's to 20?
Yes.
That's great.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister?
The one thing this morning, I would like to let everybody know that the Lorraine County Government Social Page is up on Facebook. I'm going to try to make it informative to follow along with activities and such. So I guess that's the way every organization's going. So we have ours up now. And I know Megan's been putting up content, different meetings and events that are taking place. And so if anybody would like to, I guess the word is sign on board as a friend or whatever it is, I'm pretty new to that stuff myself. Please do so. I saw Commissioner Kayla picked up on it just the other day. The one thing this morning, I would like to let everybody know that the Lorraine County Government social page is up on Facebook. I'm going to try to make it informative to follow along with activities and such, so I guess that's the way every organization's going, so we have ours up now, and I know Megan's been putting up content, different meetings and events that are taking place, and so if anybody would like to, I guess the word is sign on board as a friend, or whatever it is, I'm pretty new to that stuff myself, please do so. I saw Commissioner Kayla picked up on it just the other day. I think we got about three point two friends so far, but we've been, we just came up on Friday, and we're trying to make a go at it, and we're looking for content and things to make it worthwhile for people to be plugged in the Lorraine County Government, so I got that. Thank you.
Well, I was talking to Mayor Hunter the other day from Sheffield Village, and what they did on their social networking sites, put everybody up who had warrants out for their arrest. They had nineteen people show up in two days.
That's a great idea.
I like that, too.
Maybe we can do that as county government.
It's interesting. Yeah, it's, I probably certainly had a lot of people tuning in.
Big Brother is here.
Well, let me know what you think about the page, Commissioners, and obviously we're looking for comments and things that are going on, and what you want to let the community know, so we're always, you know, trailing, but this time we're trying to be part of the, part of the wave, rather than being run over by it. Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, my son has signed me up for Facebook also, and I, you know, I have a hard time keeping up with my emails, so now I gotta worry about that.
Mr. Ennis, this is the County Prosecutor.
Commissioners, I would request a resolution. We have to renew our contract with Carlisle Township where we act as their law director and their home world township, so I would request a resolution renewing that contract for a one-year period from January first of this year to two thousand and eleven.
Do you know how that worked out this year as far as the billing is concerned?
I think we, we figure out about a hundred and fifty hours, and I think we're pretty well. Couple of years we've been a little over, somewhere a little under. It's been pretty close, I think.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Anything further, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Is that it? Commissioners report.
Is that it, Jerry?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, kind of the bearer of bad news here on this one. The sheriff has sent us an email talking about the sheriff sales in Lorraine County, and up until March twenty-fourth of this year, we've already scheduled five hundred and sixty-five sheriff sales. Last year, for the same time period, was three hundred and eighty-two, so we're a hundred and eighty-three ahead of the game, unfortunately, this year, so it's not good news. Commissioner Kayla, are you going to talk about the census?
Yep.
Okay, good, because I had that on my list, and then got an email from Mayor Gillock in North Ridgeville about a project he's working on. Is this the same project that, or funding pool that we're going after our projects?
Yes, we've received a number of requests for supports from different organizations within the community, and after talking with the board last week, it was indicated that we also had projects that were seeking funding from the, from similar, similar funding sources, and that we were, while we felt they were all worthy, the board felt they were all worthy, we weren't going to endorse any one particular project, so we've indicated that-
I wasn't sure if this was the same, one of the same funding pool projects.
Great projects. I will say, for the first time in the last few years, I've seen requests for funding come out of Lorraine that, that are really making sense and, and look to be great projects.
Okay, and I guess the last thing is, last week I had brought up the three hundred dollars for the locks for the cells over at the Justice Center.
Yes, ma'am.
And I didn't have any support at that time, but now that we talked after the meeting, and you said it was something that we could take out of the-
Yes, ma'am.
Justice Center funding, so I didn't know if my other Commissioners were aware of that.
The, I sent an email after discussing it with the Commissioners last week. I sent it out to the sheriff.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was actually my error, because I didn't understand where, I thought the jail was requesting the locks and not the Justice Center. After listening more completely to what was said there, I, I realized that I, I had erred in that, and that it was definitely a Justice Center expense. I sent an email to the sheriff late that afternoon indicating that, had I read the first request completely, there wouldn't have been no question, and apologized to him, told him we'd take care of the locks.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, Commissioner Kowski brought up yesterday, we had a county counts meeting at Lorraine County Community College. I had the opportunity to speak to about fifty early college students, myself, Fred Wright from the Urban League, Marcus Madison, Elery City Council, and Anne Schloss from the Elery City Schools, about the importance of everyone being counted, and the effect it will have on our county for the next ten years in relation to receiving federal funds and services provided, so it's very nice. They brought the bus in that's touring the country, and Betty Halliburton's doing a great job organizing that, with Richard Romer, who did a very good job also. Are you going to talk about Noak at all, our first meeting with our new trustees, or should I?
I wasn't going to, so why?
Okay, I'll bring it up. Well, we had our first Noakka meeting, went very well. Like to thank trustee Rundle and trustee Amizmania. I think they enjoyed their first experience at Noakka this past Friday. There was a lot of information, especially in regards to the stimulus money coming out in the next round. Also, had a very nice evening. Congratulations to Kudrowski's Bakery. Great job at the Punski Ball on Sunday night.
I actually had one this morning, too.
Oh, did you?
Yesterday and today.
I brought some on.
So it's Fat Wednesday for me.
You were complaining last week.
I know. That's why she had two, because she was complaining.
End of my report, Commissioner.
Thank you. Just an FYI to the news media that's here, Lorraine County Health District, the Lorraine City Health District, and the Elery Health District has a press release that they've issued this morning about the Lorraine County health rankings. There is a study that was done statewide, I believe. There is an article in the Cleveland area paper this morning that addresses that, but they've made it more specific to our county with this one and a half-page news release. Talks about our rankings, and stated that Lorraine County was ranked thirty-six of the eighty-eight counties in health outcomes, which represent the overall morbidity and mortality rates of the county, and fortieth in health factors, which includes health behaviors, clinical care, social and economic factors, and the physical environment. And goes on to say, "This report ranks the health of counties using not only traditional measures of health, such as low birth weight and adult smoking, but other influences such as access to healthy foods and motor vehicle death rates. The rankings were largely created from nationally available data at the Centers for Disease Control and the National Center for Health Statistics. Most of the data used was public data. A grant from Robert Wood Johnson Foundation provided funding for the data acquisition, analysis, analysis and preparation at no cost to states or communities. The purpose of the rankings is to increase awareness of the many factors that contribute to the health of a community, and to underscore the reality that it is essential to approach health improvement through the development of community partnerships. The rankings do not compare cities within counties, Ohio's counties to other states' counties, or Ohio to any other state." If anybody's interested, Teresa has copies of the news release. This is for me. And that's my report.
Before we go any farther, I want to piggyback on the census, something that Ted did not mention. They are recruiting temporary workers for the census, the census takers, and if you're interested, you can go to five oh six Broadway, the third floor in the city of Lorraine. Bilingual speakers are, are very much encouraged to apply, and there is a note that says, "The pay does not impact government assistance you may currently receive, nor does it disqualify you from receiving government assistance." Have to be a U.S. citizen, legal permanent resident, eighteen years of age, have a valid Social Security number, driver's license, you will have to pass a background check, and commit to four days of training, and those days are all in February, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, so if you're interested in some part-time work, head over to five oh six Broadway. Thanks.
Just a note, Investment Advisory will meet next Tuesday at eleven o'clock in Meeting Room A, and then also I want to thank Mr. Farley, he gave me this morning, whichever you received. Bradley?
Yes.
The Four Chaplains stamp.
I think maybe he might like to say something, Teresa.
Do you want to say something?
Mr. Bradley, would you like to come to the microphone? Not just wave, come on up to the microphone and, and tell us again why you're here this morning. Right there, at the microphone. That way Hal can pick up your comments.
However, the, is this working?
Yes, it's working.
Oh, because before it wasn't working at quarter to nine.
Well, we didn't turn it on then.
Oh, I see. I'm Ronald T. Bradley from Lorraine, Ohio, and I'm a stamp collector, or used to be, anyway. So how can I help you?
Well, tell us why you came today.
Well, I, I found two more envelopes, and I wanted to complete everyone in this circle to have one.
Right. How thoughtful of you. This is in regard to the Four Chaplains presentation that happened last week, and happened last year.
Yes.
And you gave the center part, each of us, a stamp commemorating that, and you were so thoughtful, as Teresa noted, she didn't, you didn't want her to be left out, so you brought her a stamp today.
Since that time, since that time, I found three more of them.
You were cleaning.
And, I wished I'd had more of them.
Well, but we think it was so nice of you to remember us at all in the first place, and you gave Jerry Ennis a stamp, and-
Dan Billman?
Mr. Dan Billman is in the back. I saw you before the meeting started, and you told me what your plan was, so I asked Dan to come to the meeting as well, and Dan, you got some stamps, too. All right, so thank you so much, again.
Yeah, that was, the first time that, a year ago, when they, they came in and had the ceremony, I was not at the meeting earlier. Then the next week, I came and brought those three envelopes-
Right.
-that I found. And besides, you know, there was another incident called the Fighting Sullivans. Well, it was a movie called Fighting Sullivan, Sullivans, and there was five sons that were on the same boat, same ship that was torpedoed. All five of them got lost, and ever since then, the government does not allow two members of the same family being in, like, the same unit.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that was a good adjustment.
We learn, sometimes too late, but we learn.
Yeah.
Thank you again for coming this morning.
You're welcome.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
And-
Board Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
We'll go to our public hearing, Linda Blanchett.
Well, she used to be my twin, but I don't think they're gonna, they'll be able to tell us apart now, don't you think?
Unless you work on mine now.
Unless you-
Go back blonde?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm always waiting each week.
You never know.
Yeah, that's right.
Although I've never been that color. I don't know.
This is my natural color, so.
Mine's more like this.
Yeah.
Okay, that's your beauty tip for the day.
There we have it. So this is the first public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Programs. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Everyone. If you haven't already done so, please pass the sign-in sheets around. Sign in.
Is there any handouts or anything for us?
No.
No? Okay.
Again, I'm here to conduct the first public hearing for the fiscal two thousand and ten Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG. This program uses both state and federal dollars, and it's administered locally by the Board of Commissioners, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, through their Community Development Department, which is located at two two, two-two-six Middle Avenue, Elery, Ohio. I want to remind everyone that in, in, in this program, there are acquired cities, and there are entitlement communities. An entitlement community must have a population greater than fifty thousand residents. Entitlement cities and counties receive their funding directly from the federal government. Elaria and Lorraine are entitlement communities. An acquired city is a community with a population less than fifty thousand, with concentrations of low-to-moderate-income families, and they receive an earmark from the state, but must work with their local county for funding. We have two acquired cities, which is Sheffield Lake and Amherst. North Ridgeville is a state entitlement community, which means they bypass the county, and they receive their funds directly from the State Department of Development. Lorraine County is an acquired county, meaning its population is less than two hundred thousand, once the population from, in our case, Elaria and Lorraine, is removed from the county's total population. Acquired counties receiving their funding directly from the state, acquired counties receive their funding directly from the State Department of Development. Today, it's my desire to inform the public that these programs are available. The type of eligible programs, the state of Ohio has identified its general objectives for the use of these funds. The total anticipated federal allocation of the state has been divided and budgeted to meet the community needs, and we are prepared to hear from persons, organizations, and officials from this county concerning the needs that exist in our communities, and which needs might be able, we might be able to meet using these CDBG funds. There are scheduled Housing Advisory Committee meetings. They will be held on March the second and March the ninth at ten A.M. on the fourth floor, tentatively in Meeting Room A. Those will be advertised in the paper as well. The CDBG plan receives its authority from the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, as amended in nineteen ninety-two, and also HUD, and the Act established three national objectives that have to be met with this, these programs, and that is to say that any activity which uses CDBG funds must meet one of the national objectives, which is benefit low and moderate-income persons and households, aid in the elimination of blum, blum, or slum and blight, and meet an urgent community development need.
I like that.
New term, I'm sure it'll be.
New term.
Google it, Google it. This Act further established a list of eligible community development activities which can be funded with CDB dollars to include activities designed to create jobs for low and moderate-income individuals, provisions of housing, specifically the improvement of housing stock, and items related to the improvement of housing stock, public facilities improvements, activities designed to remove architectural barriers, and public service activities under certain circumstances. These five activities can be undertaken as long as they meet one of the three stated national objectives. The state of Ohio expects to receive an allocation from federal two thousand and ten Housing and Urban Development HUD funds. Additional state funds will be earmarked to provide a match. Lorraine County received three hundred and seventy-one thousand in formula allocation for the fiscal year two thousand and nine grant year, and we expect to receive approximately the same amount of funding for two thousand and ten. We will be applying for two thousand and ten CDBG formula funding. Lorraine County received five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars in CHIP funds for fiscal year two thousand and eight, and is eligible to apply for up to five hundred thousand for the two thousand and ten grant year. Fair housing activity is mandatory and is required, is a requirement for receiving these grants. In the past, Lorraine County has primarily used four programs. These include Community Housing Improvement Program, which is the CHIP program, Formula Allocation Program, CDBG, Water and Sanitary Sewer Program, and Economic Development Program. Other programs that I will mention, because we're having this public hearing, should I mention them? Possibly we can apply for them in the future. Other programs available are the Homeless Assistance Grant, Housing Assistance Grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, Comprehensive Downtown Revitalization Tier One, and also Tier Two, Micro Enterprise Business Development Discretionary Grant, and New Horizons Fair Housing Assistance Program. CDBG FY two thousand and ten Funding Request Forms will be mailed out to all eligible townships and cities this Monday, if not sooner, and they will be mailed also to past CDBG public service participants. The second public hearing will be held on March twenty-fourth, two thousand and ten, at nine forty-five A.M., same place, fourth floor, and that is it. The CHIP application deadline is April the first, two thousand and ten, at five P.M. All applications must be down to the state by that time, and the CDBG formula deadline is June twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten, five P.M. And if anyone has any questions?
Thank you, Linda. Any questions? If not, I move this public hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
We were public comment?
Public comment.
Is there anyone who wishes to, Nancy?
Good morning. Good morning. I have prepared Phase Two reports. May I come forward to bring you a copy? Sure. Thank you. I'm learning how to create these reports. This is new to me, so there's a couple two thousand and eight that should be two thousand and nine, so my apologies for the error. Two thousand and nine for Phase Two has, was a slow move because of the economy, but we did chug along. As you can see, we have the hours here for the different tasks that were done for Phase Two. Our office oversees four of the elements out of six, which will be the erosion set of control rules, the post-construction rules, the plan reviews, and then the Lorraine County pipe. If you would like me to bring quarterly reports to the Commissioners, I can do that as well. And does the Commissioners have any questions?
No, those are fine. I don't think there's any reason for quarterly. Unless we have a big spike, we have really good news, quarterlies would be nice.
Okay, I can do that.
Is that it? Any other questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Did you get a copy through here? Any other public comments? If not, I move the board go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the county administrator. Did you have any, Jerry? I didn't think you asked.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
On April first, two thousand and ten, our nation will be counted. Every person, whoever they are, wherever they live, and what we learn will transform what we know about ourselves. The two thousand and ten census, it's a new portrait of America. The twenty-ten census, it's a new portrait of America. The twenty-ten census is an exciting milestone for America. It promises to deliver accurate information about our diverse and growing population, and it's important for the future of every community. Census data will be used to allocate over three hundred billion dollars in federal funds every year.
The twenty-ten census will be important to the nation because it is the foundation of our democracy.
The census, no matter when it is, is the consummate partnership between local, state, and federal government.
Communities use the data to plan for their future, like disaster and emergency services, healthcare services, schools, transportation, libraries, senior centers, and more. The twenty-ten census builds on the success of previous censuses, and is the best-planned and most well-researched census ever. And innovations, like a new short census form, will help to make it even more successful.